The zoning board of adjustment meeting will come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier News, notice published posted on the bulletin board in municipal building, notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier News and a stall ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Reggio? I see you.
Here.
Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
And vice chairman, Mr. Weisman?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
From God and state to America. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canelli, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There's only one change that I'm aware of, the application of J. R. Ventures, 136 11th Street, at Stanford in Germany until September 22nd, 2022, there will be no further notification by the applicant. That's the only change I'm aware of to tonight's agenda.
Mr. Canelli, I'm sorry, you broke up. What was the item number?
The item number is the last one, number sixteen.
It's J.R. Ventures, Mr. Weisman.
Thank you.
Number sixteen.
Got it, J.R. Ventures.
September 22nd, no further notice.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item number five, 22 ZB 19V. Aladell Osunami.
Ms. Osunami, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
Yes, I'm trying to get a variance for a fence that was erected in my yard. Is it a variance?
Yes, you are seeking a variance.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to check with Mr. Hinterstein on this?
Yes, Mr. Hinterstein, do you have any comments on this?
Really just one. The problem is here is that it's a corner property and the fence was put up right on the property line, which we don't allow. Again, the fence typically needs to be, even with the front yard setback in the particular case, you know, that would be, I believe it's 25 feet. What we're asking is that the fence be relocated so that it's at least a minimum of eight feet back off the property line, which is, you know, pretty much the bare minimum that we ever allow people to install a fence with a variance off of the property line. As you know, we very rarely ever let anybody install a solid fence that encroach into the front yard that much. Typically, we, you know, look to have those fences at least half, if not more than what the front yard setback is. But because this is a corner property and it's a little bit of a narrow lot, I think a good compromise would be eight feet.
Eight feet? This, Osunami, are you okay with that?
The problem that is the fence has been erected without, I didn't know I was supposed to be getting a permit. So it's been erected. So for me to do that, I would incur additional expense, which I really don't have.
Okay, the fence cannot stay where it is. The fence needs to be moved. If the board denies your application, you're going to have to move it, remove the fence. And if you reinstall it, it's got to be 25 feet off the property line. Mr. Hinterstein has offered a suggestion that he would be okay if you moved it to within eight feet of the property line. That way you could still have a fence, but it cannot stay where it is. It was erected without permits. You never would have gotten a permit to put it where it is.
Okay. Wouldn't if it, so that means two feet further than where it is right now?
Eight feet further.
Eight feet.
Additional eight feet?
Yes.
Eighty from the property lines, but I'm not sure where your, where the fence exactly is. I'm assuming it was put right on the property line. We'll call it eight feet. You could have it, your property surveyed and make sure that it's eight feet from the property line. Typically, the property line in this particular area would be 10 feet off of the curb if there's curb on the street. Oh, I think if you went 18 from the face of the curb, you could be pretty confident that that would be the eight feet off the property line.
And is that acceptable, Ms. Osunami?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to check and see if there are any questions from the board. If not, you can open it to the public.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Ms. Buckley, are there any hands up?
No, chairman, no one's raising their hands.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public part. Any other questions now from the board?
If not, you can entertain a motion on this.
Yep. Hearing no comments from the board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request with the eight-foot stipulation.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And vice chairman, Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Osunami, your application as amended has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We'll mail that document to you, but you'll need that to get your permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One question coming to the board. One question.
Yes.
Yes.
I think if it's not a solid fence, instead of moving it, can we just make it not a solid fence and six feet?
No, it can be four feet and 50% solid. If it's over four feet or more than 50% solid, it's not, it's in violation of the ordinances.
Okay, so four feet, 50% open?
Yes.
50% solid?
Correct.
Okay.
Clarify, which I am not moving.
No, then we don't have to move it if you did that.
If you have additional questions, please contact Mr. Hinterstein's office and he'd be happy to go over with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next, item number six, 22 dash ZB dash 48V, Jocelyn Colasuano.
Is Ms. Colasuano present? Ms. Colasuano, are you present? Laura, do you see her?
Nope.
All right, perhaps we should skip that application and go to the next one and we'll come back to Colasuano.
Number seven.
I'm here.
Is that Ms. Colasuano?
Yes, I was just, I was muted.
You shouldn't be muted when we call you. Ms. Colasuano, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Jocelyn Colasuano, 1741 Meister Street, Biscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
A variance for a fence and also a shed which was on the property when I bought it.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to check in with Mr. Hinterstein on this.
Yeah, well done. Henry, what are your comments on this one?
Similar to this last case that we just heard, this is a corner property. This particular case, again, the fence was put right on the property line. Ms. Colasuano, it doesn't appear that their survey is accurate. Survey shows a shed in the back corner of the property, but what actually exists is a larger accessory structure that you have right behind the fence, closer to the, you know, middle of that side yard there, that front yard on Harold Place. Which again, would never have been allowed to have been placed there. It doesn't look like it's in great shape. And basically, the comments are the same is that, you know, particular case that, you know, the fence needs to be relocated 10 feet off of the Harold Place property line. And then that shed's got to be, you know, it can't stay there. It has to be located into a conforming location. You know, and it's not in a front yard. We don't allow sheds in front yards.
Relocated 10 feet, but the, but the property line, there is like an embankment from the street to where the fence is. So that's about 10 feet away from the, from the, from the street already.
Where the fence is now is 10 feet off of the curb. That's the property line where it is now.
Right.
The problem is, is that it needs to be 10 feet further back than that. You have, your house is 25 feet off the property line, 35 feet off the curb. And right currently, the fence is right on the property line. So again, you know, typically, we want these fences to be, you know, the minimum half of whatever the front yard setback is. Again, in this particular case, I think 10 feet is quite a bit less than half, or it is less than half. And I think it's a reasonable compromise considering it was put up without a permit. As far as the shed goes, again, this is, it's not even a shed. It's like an accessory structure, sort of some makeshift accessory structure. Again, I couldn't really tell what kind of condition it's in, but it either, I'm not saying you have to move it. You could get rid of it. You could move it if you want to move it into an area that's the opposite side of the property that conforms with the, with the ordinance. Or, you know, or at a minimum, it should be, you know, behind the house, the end of that side of the house, that it's not in the front yard. So, I mean, you have a lot of options with the shed, whether it's to completely remove it or demolish it and get rid of it. And this way you don't have to deal with it, or you could relocate it to somewhere on the property where it's in a conforming location. Again, I mean, I'm not sure what the size of that structure is. If it's larger than 100 square feet, it has to meet accessory structure setbacks, which are eight feet from the rear and eight feet from the side property lines, and it has to be outside of the front yard setbacks.
I have one question. So you're talking about the shed and the same thing with the other. So if the, if not the shed, the fence, the fence, so is only the part that faces in Harold Street we're talking about?
Yes, we're only talking about the fence along Harold Street. I mean, a portion of it faces, if obviously if you move it 10 feet back, there's a section of fence or 10 feet of fence that you have to move, remove from the rear and front property lines as well that enclose the yard. So nothing should be within that 10 feet of the property line.
So if it goes, if you cut, if it goes to four feet, is that allowable? Instead of moving the fence?
The fence is allowed to be four feet high, 50% solid. You would not need a variance for that. You would just have to get rid of the shed.
Okay, just get rid of the shed. Okay.
That is an option. You could go with a four-foot chain link fence, a four-foot picket fence. Again, I'm not, I don't recall off the top of my head since there were so many applications. I believe this was a wood fence though, correct?
Right, right. So the wood fence could stay at four feet? Is that what you're saying?
Contractor about doing that. It's possible that they could convert that into a 50% solid fence and trim it down so that it meets the height requirement of four feet. But again, that would not, it's up to you and.
You're breaking up, I can't see it.
Today, we can't, we can't allow you to, you know, or I should say, the board has to make a decision on whether or not issue the variance that you've requested. So we could give you the variance as, you know, or my recommendation would be to give the variance amended to 10 feet off of the property line if you're in agreement to that. And then you would have, once you get the approval, or if you get your approval, you could explore other options as well, but the fence wouldn't be, if you get the approval for the variance, you wouldn't be able to keep the fence in that location.
But I'm, I'm, I'm still just one, so it's just one option. Is it, the other option is for bringing down to four feet? That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, the board has no jurisdiction over a four-foot, less than 50% solid fence. That's permitted by the ordinance.
Okay, all right.
Under your application tonight, Mr. Hinterstein is recommending that it be moved to 10 feet off Harold, the Harold Place property line. If you elect to go in that route, you could still make the choice to reduce it to four feet and leave it where it is.
Okay, so I could still make it to four feet and leave it where it is?
As long as it's less than 50% solid.
Okay, all right.
So would you like to agree to, on your application tonight, to move it to 10 feet off Harold Place?
Um, no, I would like to leave it at, bring it to four feet, partial solid.
You don't have, you don't need our approval for that.
Okay, I don't need the approval of that.
But if we.
But you're, you're before the board and the shed still needs to be relocated to a.
Okay, so I, I think at this point, the shed, I'll just tear it down.
Then if I understand this correctly, we're just going to vote no on this request because the applicant is withdrawing her requirements.
Mr. Weisman, you're absolutely correct. Yeah, you should open it to the public, however.
Ms. Colasuano, do any other question?
No, no, sir.
Anyone on the board have any questions at this point? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions? Ms. Buckley, do you see any hands?
No, I don't see any. But she is required to get a zoning permit. Once she changes the fence, because she is in violation. She still needs to get a permit, even if she doesn't get the bearings. Because she'd have to call our office.
And that'd be a permit for the four-foot fence.
Correct. Yes, they're required to get the permit because it's never legal.
This way you could be inspected to know that it conforms with the ordinance.
Okay, so I have to call the office for a permit? Okay.
Yes. Hearing no questions from the public? Are there any questions at this point from the board? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we know on this request as.
It's to, it's to deny the fence location and to require the removal of the shed.
It's a, a removal of the shed. Thank you.
Do I, do I have a timeline to remove the shed?
It's up. Thank you.
Yeah, the board can set a reasonable timeframe to remove the shed, perhaps 60 to 90 days after the memorialization of the resolution.
Okay.
After Memorial Day or after Labor Day?
After the memorialization of the resolution.
Sorry. It's a Memorial Day.
Starting somewhere.
I wish.
So do I have to stay for the rest of the meeting or can I leave?
Well, you can leave. The, I'd like to have the clerk call the roll.
Did we get a second on that?
No, we did not.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Tillery?
I believe Mr. Reggio seconded it.
Okay, I'm doing roll call now. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And vice chairman, Weisman?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number seven. It's 22 dash ZB dash 557, Brandy Patterson.
Is Brandy Patterson present?
I'm here.
Ms. Patterson, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Brandy Patterson, 1 Lavender Drive, Biscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Hi, I am requesting a six-foot solid fence. I had put five feet from my property line, but after listening to everyone else, I don't know if it would have to be at a 10-foot setback from my property line.
Mr. Chairman, we should check with Mr. Hinterstein on this.
Yep, Henry, what is your take on this, please?
My take on this one is we actually had an application here recently, not too long ago, on the opposite side of the road. Believe it was the opposite side of Maplehurst. I'm not sure if it was Lavender, but, and again, 10 feet was the recommendation in that case. 10 feet is my recommendation here. That takes it 10 feet off the property line, actually takes you out of an easement that exists on your property. And the only other stipulation would be is that we required that fence to have a 50% solid copper on the fence. So that wasn't six feet of solid fence. I believe that fence is five feet with like a, either lattice or picket top, that it's not so solid in nature. Has a little bit more openness to it. So that would be the same recommendation here so that it's consistent with the other fences in the area that we've approved bearings in them.
Okay, um, just a question because I don't want to overstep. My concern for the six-foot was just that I have three small kids. I'm pretty sure a lot of people here have children. I'm a little nervous about people looking into the property as everybody walks up and down these streets every single day. I am a widower. I lost my husband in 2020 to COVID. He was a patrol sergeant in Bedminster. I'm trying to do the best here that I could do to keep my children as safe as I can by doing it on my own. I'm fine with the 10-foot, but I just, I'm a little nervous the way everything is going on in the world and would really like to keep the privacy in my backyard without having that lattice. And I, I did see some fences around the area with lattice and without the lattice. So I don't know if it's just you have to have that lattice at the top part or can it just be solid?
Yeah. The problem is, is you're requesting a variance to the fence where I believe the requirement is quite substantial. I'm just looking to see where, what the front yard is here.
It's four feet, 50% open, Henry.
Yeah, no, I know that. I was just looking at the set, front yard setback. It's pretty substantial in this neighborhood. I'm not sure if it's 35, is it front yard setback?
I think it's a 40 setback.
Yeah, but.
40 feet.
Forty?
Forty.
So we're allowing you to do 10 instead of 40, so.
I picked the 10.
You know, that's quite a substantial deviation from the variance. So we're not, you know, the five feet of that fence is going to be completely solid. And it's not like, you know, the lattice is, you know, completely invisible or a picket top, if you prefer picket top. Is it a little bit more openness because you're so close to the property line? Now, you wanted to say you want to move it 20 feet back, I'd be totally fine with you putting a six-foot solid fence back. Because then you'd be offering, you know, half of the front yard setback. But because it's so close, you're a quarter of what the requirement is, that was a fair compromise. And also what, you know, what the compromise was for the neighboring property across the street.
Okay, so 10, 10-foot and the, it's a five foot with just like an inch of the lattice top.
A foot, a foot.
You want a six-foot fence, it's like a copper part of the fence. It's like the last one foot of the fence. Typically either a picket or a lattice. I mean, there's a couple of different options that you can get in your fence company. Just have a little bit more openness versus the solid.
Okay, I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, let's open this to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions?
No, chairman.
Or, or comments?
Or comments.
Or comments.
Nobody raised a hand either way.
I'd like to close this portion of the public portion. Any questions at this point from the board? Hearing no questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request, 10-foot, moving a 10-foot in, having a five-foot solid and the top foot being lattice work. Will the clerk, okay, I get a second?
Thank, I'll, I'll second it.
Roy?
Mr. Blount, he raised.
Okay, will the clerk take the roll?
All right.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka? Mr. Mitterondo?
Here. Yeah, yes, I mean.
Thank you. I got you. And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson, your application as amended has been approved. We will memorialize it at our next meeting. You don't need to be present for that. We'll mail a copy of that document to you and you'll need that to get your permits.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good night.
Number eight, 22 dash ZB dash 13V. Craig Murnau?
Mr. Ulrich, are you present?
I am, Mr. Canelli.
Good evening.
Good evening. We are here a second time, prepared to proceed consistent with the July 12th memorandum from Mr. Hinterstein as to the application.
Yes, and after we spoke earlier this evening, I spoke to Mr. Hinterstein, he confirmed what we discussed. So perhaps he can talk to the board about that.
Sure, so Mr. Murnau is looking to put an addition on his home. He requests some variance relief due to existing, to the existing condition of the home. And Mr. Hinterstein has requested that, that the back of the property not be used for business purposes, that debris removed and some other items of concern. Last time we were all here was the second floor addition being modified as to step in from the side of the existing home, which Mr. Murnau is prepared to do. Mr. Hinterstein, I believe, suggested a two-foot step in, which Mr. Murnau is agreeable to.
And are you agreeable to the rest of Mr. Hinterstein's report?
We are.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think that takes care of all the outstanding issues on this. You may want to check in with Mr. Hinterstein just to see if he agrees.
I'm sorry, you brought up at the very end, Mr. Canelli.
You may want to check in with Mr. Hinterstein just to see if we've covered everything.
Thank you. Mr. Hinterstein?
Yeah, I believe that takes care of everything. I think we touched on everything and agreed to all the conditions. I think the only other conditions were the existing driveway being paved. Again, the addition will be a setback along that side property line. And the properties that can be used for business, he understands that it's not in the zone, everything.
Terrific. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public for any questions or concerns?
No one, chairman.
Thank you. Closing the public portion, I'd like to make a motion that we pass, we pass this request with all the recommendations that have been accepted by Mr. Hinterstein. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take a roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And vice chairman, Weisman?
Yes.
After Ulrich, we will memorialize in, at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Item, item number nine, 22 dash ZB dash 49V, Cheryl LeBlanc and Frances Presser?
I am here.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Cheryl LeBlanc, 503 New Durham Road, Biscataway, New Jersey.
Thank, thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Um, I'm requesting bulk variances. I need to build an addition onto the home, which encloses the carport and wraps also around the back encompassing two of the bedrooms. And I need to build a shed because currently in the back of the carport, there is a shed that is built onto the houses. Like it's on the foundation. It was built that way. And that will be encompassed as part of the addition, so I need to build a new shed. I previously requested a zoning permit, but that was denied because the property is less than 10,000 total square feet. So I need a variance for that, too.
Yeah, I'd like to point out to the board that most of the variances here are existing due to the undersized nature of this lot. Mr. Chairman, you may want to check in with Mr. Hinterstein for his comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hinterstein?
Yes, I don't see real any issues with this application. There is just one item, um, the fact that, um. There's really two items. One is, I don't believe the survey was accurate. I, I believe your driveway is sufficient to hold two vehicles, correct?
Yes, the dri, since that, the, the drive, the wa, the driveway was widened after the, after that survey was done. So the driveway has already been widened. Technically, there would still be room for four cars.
That's what I wanted to confirm and because. Carport's being sort of removed, that's a parking space technically, so. We're good on that. I wanted you to confirm that. The other thing is, is that, um, we have, I believe there's county plans to improve the dorm road. And I believe the township needs a temporary construction easement. Uh, and again, it's temporary in nature. It's the easement that if they encroach on the property when they're redoing the sidewalk and curb. That they'll restore it. But it, it's a possibility that they may encroach a little bit into the property line. Uh, I don't know exactly. I believe it's a six hundred and forty square foot. Uh, so it's, it's not out of tremendous. I think it comes out to about. Somewhere in the five to eight foot range. Again, it's temporary in nature, just during the construction of new dorm road, whenever that takes place. So I would be hopeful that you would agree to the great construction easement. Uh, and that documentation will be prepared by the township. For you.
So the easement would be to do, to put the sidewalk in or?
It's actually, yeah, so when they do the road improvements on your dorm road. They may encroach onto the property, you know, they may step on the lawn or something of that nature. Wider than what the property line is, and so they get a temporary construction easement, so that if you do that. It's, it's basically in line with easement, then it's restored back to the, you know, existing condition. Uh, so it benefits you and the township.
That's fine.
What about the shed?
The shed, there's no issue with, the shed is conforming actually, so it's part of the application, but there's no variances required for.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, I, they, I applied for the zoning permit and I made sure that I followed the code as far as, you know, it's, it's. How far it was from the property lines and everything, but they said my property was less than ten thousand square feet, so I needed a variance. So I was getting the variance for the, for the, for the construction, I, I added it to that.
Right, right. Oh, it's part of the application, but we don't have any issue with it just because the lot's undersized. Anything that she did out there, we figured the variance for the undersized lot.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it appears we've addressed all the issues on this application.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I would like to open this up to the public. Any questions or concerns from the public? Ms. Buckland?
Oh, no one, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public session at this time. I'd like to make a motion to accept this request. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Uh, will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. LeBlanc, your application's been approved with the condition that you grant the temporary construction easement. We will memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting. You don't need to be there, but we'll send that document to you and you'll need that to get your permits.
Okay, so I have to wait for that to apply for the permits?
Yes.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Number ten. Twenty-two dash ZB dash five-two V, Jocelyn Galvez?
Here.
Are you present?
Yeah.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Jocelyn Galvez, one-six-one Murray Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Ms. Galvez, could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
I am trying to redo my stairs, so I want to add a landing, so I need a bearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein about his concerns on this application.
Henry, we have.
Henry, you're muted.
Immediately.
Let me try that again. There's just a couple of minor issues on this application. Uh, one, again, it's a pretty severe front yard setback variance. Uh, I totally get the landing in front. I was hoping that you could reduce that to three feet, which is still. A pretty comparable, a pretty, you know, adequate landing area where that you could stand on and, and, uh, open your door without. You know, having to stand on a step, uh, provide, it provides a, a little bit more stability, but it'll. A little bit less encroached into that front yard setback. Um, the other issue was the shed. Uh, I believe that shed was removed. Correct?
I don't have a shed. I removed it, uh, probably over a year ago.
Alright, perfect. So that eliminates that issue because it was over the property line. And like you said, the only other issue is just, um, if you would agree to the one foot reduction in that landing. That would really help considering the, um, again, the front yard setback variance is, is, uh.
That's fine. I, I can agree with that.
And then the, the last item would be is, come on to the last application, the plan is for, I believe Murray Avenue to be. Reconstructed in the very near future. And I think the township needs a five-foot easement, temporary construction easement. For the same reason, in case they stall sidewalk and step on your lawn, have the ability to repair it without any issues.
Um, I'm sorry, I thought they already, we already got the sidewalks fitted.
It could be Adams. Now, possibility that, are you on a corner?
Yes, I'm on a corner.
Okay. I was told the five-foot easement, I'm not sure if it was for Adams or for Murray Avenue. So, again, if you agree to that, I will. The township will make sure whichever road it's for, again, either way, it would be the same amount, five-foot temporary construction easement. It's only if. For some reason they disturb your property when they're doing the sidewalk or curb or road work. That they would repair it and restore it to the existing condition, uh, and they would have the ability to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
There's no other issues, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing no questions, like the public. Are there any questions or concerns from the public?
No one, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public section. I'd like to make a motion to accept this request. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Of the acceptance is with the, uh, change to three feet instead of four.
Yeah, the, the changes would be the one foot, uh, change in the, the landing and the temporary construction.
I know, right. Thank you. Uh, will the, uh, clerk please take the role?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Ms. Galvez, your, uh, application has been approved with those two conditions we just mentioned. Uh, we will memorialize it at our next meeting and send a copy of that document to you. You don't need to be present at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Item number eleven, twenty-two dash ZB dash five-four V. Alexander Ross.
Mr. Rojas, present?
Yes.
Mr. Rojas, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
I want to propose a fence setback to twenty-five foot. From my home site over the Chriswood Street.
Mr. Chairman, we've heard a lot of fence applications. You might want to go right to Mr. Hinterstein for his comments.
Yes, Henry.
Uh, yeah, this one, I believe this fence is proposed in an appropriate location. It's being proposed twenty-five feet back from the property line. Uh, again, it requires, I believe, a forty or fifty foot front yard setback, but. It appears to be in an appropriate location considering, uh, the neighbor's fence, the property behind is in a similar location. Uh, and it provides substantial space to the Crestwood Avenue corridor, so I do not have any other issues with this application. I, I believe it's. It's appropriate as, as presented.
Terrific. Any questions from the board at this point? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns?
No, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public section. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, um, request. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Will the clerk please take the role?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Rojas, your application has been approved. We will memorialize it at our next meeting in a written document. We'll mail that to you and you'll need that to get your permits. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve. Two-two dash ZB dash six-four V.
A-actually, Mr. Weissman, we have changed the agenda. The next application is. Two-two dash ZB dash sixty-four V, uh, The Wax Studio by Anna LLC. That revised agenda came out, uh, late this evening.
Uh, that's what I said. I read, that's the one I read.
Okay, I, I, I was just checking.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay.
You can show you're paying attention.
Thank you. This is for. Temporary, temporary use variance for the wax studio.
Correct. Is, uh, Ms. Smith, uh, present?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Forget Zoom every time. Uh, yes, good afternoon. I am Cynthia Smith, the attorney for The Wax Studio by Anna LLC. And we're here for the twenty-one, one-five-oh-two dot four, uh, temporary use permit. Ms. Smith intends to open up a wax studio at four-four-seven South Washington Avenue in Piscataway, New Jersey. It's an old site, so at this time, a site plan is not available, but will be available within six months. Her use here will not be detrimental to the community as required under twenty-one dash one-five-oh-two dot four. In fact, I think it will enhance then the area occupying space that has been empty. Uh, which I think will help a lot in that area and it will outfit right in, in the commercial zone that it is in as well.
And you understand that if the site plan application is not ready within six months, you, you, uh, if this is granted, you are eligible to come back and ask that that be renewed for another six months?
Yes, I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, from a, a. Legal point of view, I don't have any other issues on this.
Uh, Henry? Any questions on this?
Really, this is just a temporary use. It's really not a. Any variances with the use that's proposed is allowed in the zone, just that the site, um, needs a little. Loving under care and, uh, needs a site plan because there hasn't been, uh. I think any improvements done on the property in a long time and parking of that nature, so. This is allowed. It's not an issue. They'll come back at some point, six months hopefully, uh, with the site plan to improve the site a little bit and then I think it'll be a win-win.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I would like to open this to the public. Are there, are there any questions or concerns from the public?
No, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public section.
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Uh, Henry, I looked at the property too. Is there any reason they can't start cleaning that place up? Between now and six months?
No, it's, it's not necessarily that it's, it's, uh. The shambles or anything of that nature.
No.
It's just that there's really, you know, the parking's not needed very much. There's no, you know, there may be some issues with sidewalk. You know, could they, you know, I guess technically they could. Make more sense though, I think, Don, if they probably had a plan as to what they were going to do first. You know, I could think it, you know, put a pen to paper or maybe come up with a plan. But it's not that bad. The front of the property is, you know, just concrete and there's access and it.
No, I've seen it. Oh, by the way, I apologize for being a little tardy. I had technical difficulties.
Rory wasn't there?
Are there any other questions at this time? Hearing none, I would like to make a motion that we grant the temporary use variance for this. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
I like when you all speak up at one time.
The clerk, please take the role.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
I know you're getting ignored. Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Ms. Smith will prepare a resolution of temporary use approval and consider it at our next meeting. We'll mail a copy to you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Bye.
Thank you. Moving on, item number thirteen, two-two dash ZB dash six-zero V, Dish Wireless LLC.
Is Mr. Skolnik present?
Yes, he is.
Good evening, Mr. Skolnik.
How are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
I'm here tonight on behalf of Dish Wireless. This is one of the. Interpretations under the federal statute for the zoning exemption under sixty-four oh nine. There are certain standards that we have to meet. I do have a witness here, but we do have Mr. Chadwick's timely memorandum. Based on his, based upon his site reconnaissance, as he says. That also confirms, so chairman, I'm happy to put the witness on, or we're satisfied to rely on Mr. Chadwick's, uh, letter as well.
Uh, the board has heard many of these applications and ordinarily, uh, based upon the representations of council. Uh, and our witnesses, uh, it appears that, uh, a, a witness is not necessary. Um, it is your representation that no new variances are created. Uh, no height increase is involved, no increase in the area of the, uh, equipment area. Is that your representation?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's satisfied by question, Jim.
Uh, uh, the board has heard many of these applications. Um, essentially they're here just to check off the boxes. Uh, to make sure that they don't need any new variances, which would create, uh, a need for a public hearing on this. Um, since they have checked off those boxes, it appears that they have satisfied the requirements for an exemption from site plan application.
We need to vote on this now.
Yes. You, 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 you should open it to the public?
Will do. I just wanted to make sure the, the process. Okay, anyone on the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Are there any questions or concerns from the public?
No one, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public session. I'd like to make a, uh. Like a proposal, we grant this request. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Please take the call, the role, sorry.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Chairman, thank you. We appreciate your time. We appreciate Mr. Chadwick's reconnaissance.
As we all do.
I couldn't help myself. I couldn't help myself. I'm a, I'm a longtime friend of Mr. Chadwick's. I, I couldn't help. I enjoyed the use of that word.
All right, have a good night.
Have a good night, Mr. Skolnik.
Thank you. Hi, Richard. Good night, thank you.
Item number fourteen, two-two dash ZB dash eleven slash twelve V, DF Osmond Construction.
Is Mr. Bonner or any, anyone from his office present? Right here. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Caneely. Members of the board. Thanks for your time tonight. Um, as you all hopefully remember, we appeared on, uh, June twenty-third. Uh, when the board held its first hearing, uh, the applicant presented its case for electrical vehicle charging stations at the Piscataway Town Center. That use is recognized as an inherently beneficial use and a permitted accessory use in New Jersey. Excuse me. The actual project area occupies only a small percentage of the existing nine acre site. Clear and convincing testimony was given by the applicant's professionals, who were then questioned by the board and its professionals. And the comments.
And the comments of township's staff report were addressed at that time. The hearing was carried before it was opened to the public in order to give the property owner and operator of the shopping center, that's Kimco, time to resolve open issues with the township regarding construction of the sidewalk and restoration of some landscape. We're here tonight to continue with the application. The issues I would let the board know between attachment to property owner have not been fully resolved and the only new information we have tonight is from a representative of property owner who will update the board on the status of the discussions with township regarding completion of the requested work. I also have representatives of all the professionals who provided testimony on behalf of the applicant in the event there are any questions when this is open to the public. Before I introduce the representative property owner, I would like to provide some context. If this application is approved, applicant likely cannot proceed with the project. If the two open items are made conditions of approval, the same would render the project economically unfeasible. I can go into a little more detail after I introduce Mr. Levi Johnson, who is the Regional Vice President of Property Management for Kimco, and he will provide an update on Kimco's discussions with township. I've seen Mr. Johnson. There he is, Mr. Caneely.
Mr. Johnson, I just swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
Levi Johnson, ten Cedar Street, Mariches, New York.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, I'm not going to lead you through this with questions. Why don't you just fill me in on what you've been discussing with the township? And who you've been speaking with?
All right. I've been speaking with the town attorney, Michael, and I actually, the two open items, as I recall it and what is being told to me are landscaping, which is trees that they believe have been cut down in the past and also adding a sidewalk down Centennial Avenue. The landscaping issue is being resolved. Any and all trees that have been removed, that have died or for whatever reason why they're not there, we are replanting per the original plan for the site. Those trees will be replanted next fall. Fall is the best time to do it. We put the funds together. We're sourcing trees and contractors now. We don't believe we'll be able to get in before the first frost. Therefore, we are agreeing to have those installed no later than November first of twenty twenty-three.
Kevin, temporary?
Join the meeting.
Okay. As, as it relates to the sidewalk and Centennial Ave, there's, there's a few things and I've been going back and forth with the attorney. When it, first and foremost, we do not have an issue installing the sidewalk. Our questions are, remains is that installing the sidewalk does require moving public utilities along with DOT boxes, which we believe should not be an expense that we would take on as those are not items that we maintain. Further, the sidewalk, if we were to install it today, doesn't lead anywhere. We currently do have full path of travel from Washington Ave through our entire site that does lead through that lot. And we have ADA path of travel for that. But by installing this sidewalk today on Centennial Ave, it literally stops at that light and goes nowhere. We would be willing to install that sidewalk pending the rest of these sidewalks are being developed so that the sidewalk does create path of travel down Centennial. So that's what we are asking to do.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If there are any questions for Mr. Johnson, feel free.
So, Mr. Johnson, are you amenable to doing the installing the sidewalks at a future time pursuant to a developer's agreement that may not be covered by this approval?
Absolutely. Yes.
And you would be willing to condition this approval on entering into a developer's agreement with the township of Piscataway to install the sidewalks within a certain period of time?
Are you, are you indicating the condition of the approval for the charging station?
Yes.
Okay, well, we do see them as separate items, but we are willing to enter into a developer's agreement. Again, pending, we come to an agreement on what happens with the public utilities that are in the way of such sidewalk. There are items that will have to be relocated that are actually publicly owned.
And that's, that's outside the purview of the zoning board. But based upon the zoning board's professionals, Mr. Hinterstein, I would recommend to the board that if you want to vote in the affirmative on this, you condition it on the applicant entering into a developer's agreement to put in the sidewalks at a future time.
Not the applicant, Mr. Caneely. The applicant would be entered into a developer's agreement. The property owner would.
The property, that the property owner, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Bonner, you're correct.
Again, I do not, I have an issue entering into a developer's agreement, but in agreeing with this, we do not have terms of the developer's agreement. So I am, I would affirm to agree to one, but I would like to discuss the terms.
And I would recommend, I spoke to Mr. Clarkin today, who is one of the township's attorneys. He has reached out to your organization. I don't know to whom in particular. Several days ago, and he's awaiting a return call. I know you talked to Michael. I assume you're talking to Mr. about Mr. Baker?
Yeah.
Mr. Clarkin has also been involved in this. You may want to reach out to Mr. Clarkin because he actually reached out to your organization to discuss this issue several days ago, and he's awaiting a return call.
Okay, I'm unaware of that and typically I get looped into any such calls. So I guess I can reach out to Mr. Clarkin.
Yes, and if you call the township office, they can put you in touch with him.
Okay. Levi, anything further?
Nothing further.
Thank you. What, what, I'd like to clarify what the applicant is requesting if this matter is approved is that the sidewalk and landscaping not be conditions of approval imposed on the applicant and the board can respectfully consider leaving them out. If they're unwilling to do that, at least have the resolution language recognize that they're the property owner's obligations and not the applicant's responsibilities, as Mr. Caneely just said. And what we would hope is that in the interim, while the property owner is working out the details of his arrangement with the township, that the applicant be permitted, obviously, once the appeal period expires, to pursue building permits and a certificate of occupancy if that's necessary for opening his facility at this site.
Well, I, I, I think based upon what I'm hearing, I would recommend to the board that if you wanted to act in the affirmative on this, you would condition the approval of the electric vehicle charging stations on the entrance into a developer's agreement by the owner to install the sidewalks and other related improvements. And I understand, Mr. Bonner, you, you, you don't want the board to do that, but that is my recommendation.
I apologize, but I need for you to repeat that. You were breaking up.
Same here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody else had that problem.
And no, we all have that remotely. My recommendation to the board is that if the board wants to act in the affirmative on this and vote in the affirmative for the electric vehicle charging stations, that you condition this on the owner entering into a developer's agreement for the installation of the improvements, including the sidewalks.
And I guess I would just hope that some flexibility can be built into this so the applicant can make a decision whether to proceed or not. You know, they've put in a lot of time and effort into this. You know, we took almost a two-month hiatus attempting to resolve this issue, and I think that shows a lot of good faith on the part of the applicant as well as the property owner. And as I stated, and I would hope the board would take consideration of this, that they'd be allowed to, once the appeal, you know, that the property owner works diligently to enter into a developer's agreement, whatever the outstanding issues are with the township, and that the applicant be permitted to apply for his building permits, do his construction work and, and get a CO, even if that CO is temporary and, and also conditioned upon the developer's agreement. In other words, allow this to continue kind of on parallel track with the property owner working with township.
Ordinarily, any conditions of an approval have to be satisfied before you can get your permits.
Understood. I'm asking for a consideration that maybe the condition could read that the property owner continues to diligently pursue an agreement with the township, because it sounds like there are potentially significant issues. We could be, you know, waiting a substantial period of time before. I, I've worked with utilities before, you know, we have a project in Fanwood where we've been waiting on Verizon for about a year and a half to make up their minds about what they're going to do with their underground cables. I would hope that wouldn't take as much time now, but I think that's a consideration that I hope the board takes into account. So this small project on this site can move forward. It's a beneficial use. Everybody's trying to put these things in in New Jersey and we're trying to do our part, our part.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say to the board that if you condition this on the owner working diligently with the applicant, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that that condition will ever be solved. So ordinarily, if you condition something, it has to be done before they can get the permits.
I appreciate Mr. Caneely's opinion. I think I've said my piece. We don't need to reiterate. And I would just say that the applicant is doing their best to work with the township and the property owner to come to a solution that makes everybody satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Do you have anything else?
We, we, you know, I just wanted to also say again that, you know, we have representatives of all the professionals here tonight. If there are any questions from the public, I know we went through board questioning and they went back and forth with your professionals, but they're here in the event there are, are questions from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board has any questions now is the time. If the board does not, we should open it to the public.
Okay.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. There was a sign shown on the sheet. My notes in the last hearing does not indicate, are you going to put a freestanding sign up for this facility?
No, I, I think what, what testimony was last time is that that's an existing sign for the center and, and there are no.
Okay, okay.
There's no new sign.
I, I did, I guess I didn't catch that. Sorry.
It's all right. Maybe you should do more reconnaissance.
There's no new sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Are there any questions from the board? I, I had a question. And the question was related to the charging units. Will it be any way to visually buffer the charging units from South Washington? As people drive up and down and walk along South Washington, can we buffer that? Is that, I don't know the conversation that you've had about.
I was just going to say, I believe that was one of the comments that I had made originally, and I think they have to work with me on providing adequate buffering of the charging stations.
I think, I think the wording used was very, various plantings or very, a variety of plants.
Okay, that's part of the conditional agreements.
We, we show landscaping around, around the units that are being constructed and I think it was left open to work with Mr. Hinterstein to come up with something that everybody's happy with.
I recall that the, the greenery around the major pieces, but I didn't remember anything about the standalone units. But Henry answered that. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I would like to open this to the public. Are there any questions or concerns from the public? You're muted, Laura. Laura, you're muted.
I got it. Give me a minute some more. Brian Rec, sorry.
Yep, Brian Rec, twelve forty-seven Brookside Road.
Mr. Rec, could you raise your right hand?
Yep.
You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just ask, is there any way that a sign can be put on that corner near Applebee's, just like a regular street sign pointing to the chargers? That turn in, that right turn in from South Washington can be a little tricky? And I'm just worried about people like turning in then immediately stopping because they don't know where the chargers are.
That was not part of the application, but if Mr. Caneely wants to add that to the resolution, the applicant would be willing to work with some directional signage on site that wouldn't violate the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, it's just that the turn is scary sometimes. That's all I had to say, but thank you.
Towns are very finicky about signage, so.
Sure, I understand.
We don't want to create any more variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Or comments?
No one else.
I'd like to close the public section of this, of these variants. I prefer not to make the motion. I don't want to paraphrase what Mr. Caneely has said. Mr. Caneely, can you restate it?
Yeah, my, my recommendation to the board is based upon Mr. Hinterstein's report and his testimony that if you vote in the affirmative on this, that you condition that on the owner of the property entering into a developer's agreement requiring the installation of sidewalks and the other improvements required by Mr. Hinterstein. And that developer's agreement would set timeframes for that to be done.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this with the condition of property owners' development arrangements. As stated by Mr. Caneely. Can I get a second?
Mr. Weissman, can I, before you get a second, are you interested?
I'll say.
Pursuing the directional signage as requested by Mr. Rec. Perhaps you should ask Mr. Hinterstein if he's in favor of that.
Mr. Hinterstein, do you see a problem with putting up the additional signage?
Directional.
The signage of directing vehicles to where these EV stations may be, I think, can be done within the ordinance. I wouldn't, think, you know, if you wanted to include that, that, you know, directional signage in conformance with the township's directional signing ordinance, I believe that's, you know, typical, you know, two square foot, you know, three square foot sign directing somebody on a, on a typical, you know, signage post that you would see for, let's say, handicap parking sign or a speed limit sign, one of, one of those type posts with a small directional sign. I don't see any issues with that. I think we can comply with directional signage. It would just have to be pointed out and approved by the township. I don't necessarily think we'd cause any variances. You could strictly stipulate as a condition that, you know, the directional signs would be worked out between the township and the applicant.
I would, I would add, Mr. Caneely, that it'd be subject to the property owner's approval as well since it's their site.
Mr. Caneely, is that okay?
Yeah, if, if that's the board's preference and if you want to add that to your motion, you can certainly do that.
So I would like to add that to the motion that the property owner works with the township to determine the appropriate signage indicating the power stations, the charging stations.
Okay, so the, the application by Mr. Weissman has been amended. We need a second on that?
A second.
Who seconded?
Artie.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka? Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Bonner, we will prepare a motion consistent with the board's findings and send that to you after our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks for your.
You too. Thanks for your, for your time.
Item number fifteen, twenty-two dash Z B dash three eight B, Lori Sempervee. Certificate of nonconformity.
Is Mr. Sullivan present?
Yes, I am. Good evening. My name's John Sullivan. I'm an attorney with the offices of Vastola and Sullivan, and I represent the applicant Lori Sempervee. She is the owner of this particular piece of property, which is located at nineteen sixteen West Seventh Street. The property is fully improved with a two-story, two-family dwelling, a shed and some related site improvements such as a driveway. The property is located in the R seven point five zoning district, which, as you know, allows single-family homes as a principal permitted use, but does not allow two-family dwellings. The application before you tonight is for the issuance of a certificate of nonconformity pursuant to N J S A forty colon fifty-five D dash sixty-eight with regard to the use of the property as a two-family dwelling. In connection with our application, we had submitted the municipal tax records, the property deed, site photographs, construction permit, a survey and floor plans. We have with us tonight Kevin Sempervee, who is Ms. Sempervee's husband, also the, the property manager and has a background in construction. So if I could, I would begin with Mr. Sempervee.
Mr. Sempervee, are you present?
You're muted.
Mr. Sempervee, are you present?
He is there. He, I can see him. He appears to be muted, though.
Mr. Sempervee, could you unmute?
He's driving.
Mr. Sempervee, could you pull over and unmute?
We lost him.
We lost him.
Oh, he's back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is that Mr. Sempervee?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Uh, we can. Could I have your name and address, please?
You can hear me. I can't hear you. Hold on. I'm not driving.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Oh, hold on. Try again.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Uh, Kevin Sempervee, nine Willow Woods Trail, Warren, New Jersey, oh, seven, oh, five, nine.
Mr. Sempervee, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Put your hand down.
Okay, Mr. Sempervee, your wife is the owner of the property located at nineteen sixteen West Seventh Street?
That's correct.
And how long has she owned that property?
Approximately six or seven years.
And that property was purchased from a, a, a mortgage company or a bank after a foreclosure. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And prior to purchasing the property, did you have the opportunity to visit the site?
I did.
And was it set up as a two-family dwelling at that time?
It was.
And were there any tenants or occupants at that time?
Not at that time.
And based on, on everything that you saw, did you believe that it was a two-family dwelling at the, prior to the time of purchase?
Uh, yes, it was. Yes, I was inclined to that it was a two-family.
Okay, now, as part of the application, you submitted a survey dated August eleventh of two thousand and twenty-one. And that shows the, the house, the shed, as well as the driveway. Were all of those improvements there at the time you purchased the property?
Yes.
And they're, they all still remain there?
That is correct.
And the, the survey does show parking capabilities. Could you explain to the board the number of cars that can, can be parked on the site?
Uh, it is a long driveway, approximately eighty to ninety feet long with parking to the right. Also, it can accommodate six to eight cars.
And you also prepared a, a set of hand-drawn floor plans, correct?
That's correct.
And that shows each of the two units?
It does.
And could you just walk the board through, through the layout of each of the, each of the units?
The, they both comprise of two bedrooms. Front door opens up into a family room, goes into the kitchen. To the left is both bedrooms on the first floor, on the second floor, goes up through the side door entrance, up the stairs, goes into a living room, kitchen combo with two bedrooms, and of course, a bathroom.
And you also submitted a number of photographs, both of the exterior and interior. Were those photographs taken by you?
Uh, they were taken by one of my, my, my men that work for me.
Okay, and did they depict the site as it existed essentially at the time you bought the property as well as today?
Oh, yes, they did.
And the purpose of those photographs, do those photographs show that each unit has its own separate entrance?
Each unit has its own separate entrance, has its separate utilities, including gas, electric panel, electric heaters, furnaces, water heaters, water meters. So essentially, it is has, it has been set up as a two-family for a very long time.
And the, and some of the photographs you took, I think, showed the, that there's two meters, I believe, for gas, electric and water. Is that correct?
Sorry, this is the court reporter. I didn't hear the answer. Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I did. I didn't hear it.
You didn't either.
That's that is, that is correct.
And we also submitted municipal tax records. And those tax records indicate that the, the home was built in nineteen eighteen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it lists the, the type and use and the style as a multi-family two-story. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And since you've owned the property or since your wife has owned the property, you've done some work to the property. In connection with that, you applied for a permit number two zero two one one zero eight nine. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that was to replace two water heaters and two air conditioning units?
Yes, sir.
And was that work performed?
That was. That's completed.
Now, you have a, you have experience in, in property ownership as well as a background in construction. Is that right?
Uh, that is correct.
And could you briefly describe to the board that, that background in construction?
Um, what we, we have a construction company that performs everything from basic remodels to new home construction. We own over forty properties comprised over of single-family to twenty-unit properties from Plainfield to Flemington. The compromise is over a hundred and ten doors or units. So I've been doing this for twenty-five years now. Successfully flipped and built over forty homes in the area and still to this day do the same, do the same work.
Okay, and based on your experience, are you able to share an opinion with the board as to whether this property what appears to have originally been built as a two-family or was it converted at some point in time from a one-family to a two-family?
I, I believe, it was my belief that it was a, that it was built as a two-family. Just from the configuration. The we did not do any serious renovation in it, just made majorly paint and whatnot, but anything under the sink, it has old piping, it has some older electrical that leads me to believe that it's been existing for a very long time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Sempervee.
Let me ask you one question. Mr. Sullivan, you referenced a document that indicated the building was built in nineteen eighteen.
Uh, yes.
And you indicated that document, and I, and if I'm misstating, please tell me, stated that it was a multi-family two-story?
That is correct. Yeah, that is the, the municipal property tax card that we obtained through an Oprah request. And I may have misspoke. It says year built nineteen nineteen, not nineteen eighteen.
Uh, okay, nineteen nineteen. And, and that property record card is part of the application package that you submitted?
Yes, it was.
And where does that indicate that it's a multi-family?
Um, under building information, it says type and use, multi-family, story height, two-story, style, multi-family.
Thank you. Uh, those are all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other witnesses you, that you have, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, no, that is all.
Yeah. Like to open this up to the board? Well, first, let me ask Henry.
My first question is, is, and you, you referenced that card. It talks about it being nineteen eighteen multi-family. Isn't that just a current tax record card? What year was that tax record card?
Uh, that I can't tell you. This is, this is what we obtained through our Oprah search. You know, looking at, at that, it looks like the tax office in any event recognized it as a two-family. And then the construction permit that was issued was for two separate water heaters and two separate air conditioning units. So it appears that the construction department recognized it as such as well.
Let's just give the board a little background. The tax office goes out, look at a property. If it's a two-family, they assess it as a two-family. No bearing unless this goes back, unless there's a tax card that's provided that takes it back to prior to zoning, that sort of provides evidence than that it was pre-existing prior to the zoning taking place that made two-family homes prohibited. But because there's a current tax card that may state that it's a two-family home, it means that, you know, assessing has been going out, it's shown as a two-family. Now, if you put me in nineteen fifty-one or fifty-five, tax appraisal card that said multi-family, then I could say, well, you know, that's probably been pre-existing back to that date. But just because a current tax card says two-family just means, just go out. Tax office isn't responsible for whether it's legal or not legal, or whether it was legally converted. You just go out and tax what they say. And as far as the building department and permitting, I believe certain permits do not require zoning permits to be applied for. So replacement of a B C compressor or hot water heater, I don't believe requires a zoning permit to be secured along with that permit. Uh, so there's a good chance, again, the building department sees a replacement of a of a apparatus of the home or mechanical unit. If it's something that doesn't require a zoning permit for an interior change, the zoning department wouldn't really make a comment on it. And I don't think the building department would as well, but I'll leave that for, that one for another day. Mr. Sullivan, is there anything that you have that shows that this property is continuously used? Or, you know, at least close to the time of nineteen fifty-three, is it two-family?
Yeah, there, there should be a series of property record cards that are available.
You know, I, I specifically, if memory recalls, I specifically requested that. And I don't think they were, the tax office was able to provide me with anything other than what they've, what they've provided. I would certainly be happy to go back to the tax office and make that inquiry again and see if there's anything further that they can provide. And we would be able to produce that at a subsequent hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would have to recommend to the board that you ask Mr. Sullivan to do that. In other cases that we've had before the board, the, the township has provided property record cards that show how the township viewed this property over the years.
I have a further suggestion. I, I said, report outdated May nineteen. It suggested you look at the census data. Because the census data in the fifty, forties and fifties lists the names, people that live in the apartments. Had a couple cases where they produced that type of information to verify a two-family house prior to nineteen fifty-four, fifty-three. Into our title search. See what kind of names come up there.
Yeah, we did, we did run a title search and the, there's nothing in the deeds or the chain of title that speaks to whether or not this is a one-family or a two-family. Uh, we did attempt an online census information. And again, there's nothing that came back specifically that led me to one way or the other, you know, be able to make that determination. Again, it's something we can look into further, but so far we have not been able to come up with anything definitive.
Mr. Sullivan, this is Steve Weissman. I, I would like to recommend that you go back and do the due diligence you suggested to see if you can find the property record cards in question. Because the board historically does not vote against our consultants, Henry and John. We tabled this at this point.
Uh, yes, if we could, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, perhaps we could carry this. I was going to say September, but to be safe, maybe to the October meeting. Allow me the, the time to see if I can come up with anything further.
That's October twenty-seventh. And Mr. Sullivan, you will need an extension of time, so I will send that over to you. I will email you.
Yes, and for the record, we'll obviously agree to an extension of time.
So anybody here in the Senate, Lori Sempervee's application is going to be carried to October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, with no further notice by the applicant. The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Take care.
Hi, John.
Good night.
Item seventeen, adoption of resolution from the regular meeting, July fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Uh, before I call the resolutions, I will say I do not have the, the representative of who was present at the last meeting. So I'm going to call everyone who's here tonight. If you were not present at the last meeting, please vote absent or yeah, vote absent on, on the resolution. Uh, the first resolution is Christine Spengler and Marcelo Saladrigas of Mr. Tillery.
Absent.
Mr. Arregio?
We can't hear you, Jim.
Mr. Arregio?
Abstained.
Thank you. Mr. Blount?
Absent.
Mr. Haydaka?
Mr. Haydaka?
As present.
Mr. Minarondo?
As present.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Okay, next application, James Fuller, which you voted to approve. Mr. Haydaka?
We can't hear you.
Mr. Haydaka?
We're doing resolutions already.
Mr. Haydaka, on the Fuller application?
Yes, present.
And is that in favor of the resolution?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Uh, next is Stella Lee. This application was approved. Mr. Haydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Next is N Y S M S A, Verizon Wireless. This was an application for interpretation, which you approved. Mr. Haydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Last is Kingsbridge, two thousand and five L L C, which you voted to approve. Mr. Haydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Minarondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Yes.
Those, those are all the resolutions they have tonight.
Number eighteen on the agenda, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of July fourteen, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Yes. Aye.
It passed. And get a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Everyone be well.
Enjoy the ride.